You ain't got enough of them.
Or two.
Probably pretty high having that. Face to get. Priced in the man.
Is, uh, there's cost to. Ella doesn't have.
Right. But he's got plenty of places. It don't bother him that mess about the landing. Trying. Well, that's just like being boarding horses. I got people boarding horses now. Everybody okay? Yeah.
All right, see y'all. Thank you.
See you, Christian.
Yeah.
Who's Liz?
What can I say?
Hey, I'm never calling y'all five minutes.
What can I say?
I'd get him if it did. I raised it. I know I can give. Don't pay now.
All right, we can get started. Liz is back. I'd like to reconvene at seven forty-five.
Man, my wish has been gone.
All right, Ms. Mystery. We have a couple of public hearings tonight. File RZ one-nine-one-zero-zero-one.
Yes, sir. The, the next two are very similar. Um, they're major pod revisions and, uh, both are on Spieth Drive. The first one is six-twenty-two Spieth Drive. Um, acre is, uh, zero-point-one-five and the zoning is PUD. The location map is, um, uh, in Hidden Creek PUD. Zoning map, which most of it is the PUD and a little bit of S-one and R-two around there. Close-up of the aerial. And this is a site plan. So this is an existing house that's, um, under construction, but almost, almost complete. The flats are drawn to show where the, um, lot lines are and the, uh, footprint of the house. Um, when this was done, it was noticed that the five-foot setbacks are required, um, are not met. And you can see here is four-sixty-two and here. Um, so it's slightly over the, the required setback. This is the, uh, front elevation of the house and, um, it's a typical house in this type of neighborhood. And a close-up at the front between six-twenty-two is what we're looking at. And then the next one's going to be six-twenty-four. Um, you can see the five-foot setbacks create a very limited space between the, um, two new, newly constructed houses. Um, and then the builders still have to fit in the air conditioning units, swales. Uh, there's transformer boxes on this one too. Um, so you can see there is a bit of limitations on the space that they use there. Looking from the back, um, view, you can see where the locations of AC units are. There's, most of the time there are slopes between these setbacks just because of the way geography is. Um, and the swell is normally meant to run straight, uh, but when there is limited space, um, it kind of meanders between the units, um, as in this case. And you can see on this, um, as well that the side walls are faced in, um, vinyl siding. This is a photograph of the corner and you can see as it, as the wall doesn't meet the five-foot setback, there is a, um, projection of the roof cable there into the setback which requires, uh, fire resistance. Um, there's a window in the side elevation. So anything that's in the five-foot setback requires, um, there's a limit of glazing and it's twenty-five percent. This is obviously way under, so it's fine. Um, but that is one of the requirements of building code. This is a diagram to illustrate the fire separation distance required to the property lines and how they're measured. So, um, anything less than five feet for the walls is required to be one-hour fire resistant construction. Um, and anything between two and five, the, uh, any projections have to be one hour rated on the underside. Anything over five is, is not required to be fire rated. This is a diagram to explain the same thing on plan. And then roof projections, um, as you can see on the left, if you're over five, then there is no fire rating required. Um, this case, it's the, the one in the center which is less than five. So any projections would have to be rated and then anything less than two feet is not allowed by building code. So with this request, the, um, staff recommend a approval with the following conditions. So there are several conditions. On the planning side, um, any other construction, um, must comply with building setbacks. On the building standard side, um, there is conditions to require the, uh, fire rating construction, which the, uh, contractor has, um, told us that they're going to provide that in written documentation. Um, exterior walls must have a fire resist of one-hour assembly. Projections must have a rating of one hour on the underside. Openings will be less than twenty-five percent. Operations comply with the sections of the building code. And all the assembly plans must be submitted to and approved by the building standards department prior to the approval of the variance.
All right, gentlemen, do you have any questions to staff?
Makes this a pud. What makes this neighborhood?
Uh, this was the, um, Hidden Creek PUD, I believe was rezoned in about two thousand and five. Somewhere around then.
So this is an example of an old, but. Hidden Creek, if we go back, I don't think has anything commercial in it whatsoever. Um, so if, if this was, if this is coming back for us today, it would be a PRD. Where, where, where the difference is then and now.
Basically the time of the zoning.
Yep, exactly.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is the applicant here? Yes, would you like to come forward and give us any additional information? Okay, come forward and give us your name and home address. Need your name and home address.
Uh, Dirk Williams. I'm at, uh, one-two-one-nine Halton Drive in Grove Town, Georgia. And, um, when we poured it, we, we, we do an HLP on every lot, so we submit that to the county. And we tried to take as much of the lot as we possibly can to build the largest house.
Sir, could I ask you to remove your hat while you're inside? Thank you.
So we submitted it within five foot of the property lines. And before this, it had never been an, an issue, a known issue to pour the slab within it. But one of our inspectors called out and said our wall was encroached and we, we all dropped. That was our mistake for not picking that up. So, um, that's really the only thing I can provide to them. Other than that, she was pretty clear what we're looking for. We'll provide a drawing for the, uh, fire rating one-hour walls.
Gentlemen, any questions?
How are you gonna fix the, you know, what?
Kind of moving forward.
Spray some fiery tarred foam on there? I mean, how do we fix that?
A little more detail, a little more costly than that. Uh, to achieve the one-hour rating, there's one drawing online that has some to do with that and out. But I'm looking for something for an exterior. Fire-rated plywood that'll achieve the one-hour rating are two applications of five-eighths Simpson. Back on, you know, one-hour rating.
The exterior stays, the siding, siding.
Homes are complete, but yes, I know we're looking, but.
They'll probably extend further in.
It'll still will not into within. On the outside and achieve that. Costly, learning a good lesson here. Won't happen again. We're, we're.
So how do you, how do you keep that from happening again?
So when we do HLPs on every lot before the start, if anything is within five feet of the property line, that stops. If you don't have at least five-foot-three to five-foot-four on each side, different plan.
So is the slab itself into the setback?
No, but that's.
Get right up to the setback?
When we put the siding on the house that it began encroached. Uh, actual plywood itself is not. It's the siding that is. We're, we're over this much.
Questions? Okay, thanks, sir. This is a public hearing. Is room one else would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public here, or close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, file RZ one-nine-one-zero-zero-one.
Go here a second.
Second.
Would you like to include conditions on this?
That's, yes, with conditions.
So would you restate it one more time?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve file RZ one-nine-one-zero-zero-one with condi-, staff conditions.
Seconds to hold. Discussion? Yes, sir. All right. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion carries four-one. Ms. Mystery. One-nine-one-oh.
Four-one or three-two.
Vote it against.
Opposition.
No, no, it was four, four-one.
Thought you raised your hand too.
I'm revoting for it.
I count. I know I went to University of Kentucky, but I count.
You're back up.
All right, I appreciate it. All right, uh, Ms. Mystery, file one-nine-one-oh-oh-two.
Yes, sir. So this is a very similar case. The location is six-twenty-four Spieth Drive. It is next door to the property that we just looked at on point-two acres zone PUD. Again, the similar, um, locations. So this is the one just on the, the front of the cul-de-sac right there. Um, this is the lot plan of the house. It shows the encroachment on this side, four-point-seven-one. Um, on this side it's okay. And, um, the house we looked at is just to the south of that. This is the, uh, front elevation of the property, six-twenty-four. The sign is very similar. Again, you've got the close-up between the two properties where the setbacks are, um, reduced. Creating the same, same condition. So I won't go over those same. And with this one, the staff is recommending approval with the following conditions. Um, and those conditions are the same as previous ones since the, um, issue is exactly the same.
Gentlemen, are there any questions on this one? Okay. Are the applicants here? Do you have anything you'd like to add? All right, same thing. Yes, sir. Okay. Uh, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Here, I move to approve file RZ one-nine-one-zero-zero-two with condition.
Go here a second.
I'll second.
Question? All in favor? All opposed? Right, the motion, uh, carries four-one. Mr. Butler, file RZ one-nine-one-zero-zero-three.
So here's a request for a major pot revisions, revise the concept plan, building setbacks and uses. Five-twenty-six Furious Ferry Road, uh, currently zone, planning unit development. Here's the location of the property. Again, it's on the west side of Furious Ferry Road, just across from Westlake. Again, it shows the zoning, uh, it is actually part of the Forest Creek Plan Unit Development, uh, which is a little different. We'll be talking about that here in a moment. You can see across the street is Westlake, uh, the PUD here. And this was at one time part of Westlake, but no longer is. It's Clayborne. There's an herald view of the site. Kind of skinny. This thing's site itself. Lot of the property. So in nineteen-eighty-three, uh, this property was, was, was rezoned, uh, the entire Forest Creek was rezoned, uh, to planning unit development. This is the approved concept at, at that time, uh, allowed for some professional and commercial uses there. They have a very restrictive, uh, narrative that specifies specific uses, uh, for the site. Again, this was approved back in nineteen-eighty-three and hasn't been really looked at, um, since then. Uh, so the applicant, um, looking to purchase the property, they're looking to change the concept, this plan here. Uh, they've actually met with staff, uh, a while back, actually, to kind of go over ways to improve the, the old plan. You know, again, the plan here, you had the buildings right up against the residential here, has parking right up against it. Um, it did include a twenty-foot separation, but at the time, there's really no definition of how that works. Um, so working with staff on this, um, it's been revised, uh, to include these three buildings here. And one thing too, um, this was never really feasible. Um, this was something that if you go and actually start to engineer and build it, it wouldn't work that way. So this is the, the revision here. Um, the setbacks have, you, you've seen all the buildings have been moved forward. Uh, you know, this one is the only one that's still, you know, is kind of adjacent to residential properties. Um, everything's been moved forward on the property. You have a twenty-foot front setback, um, on the front. And then you have a twenty-foot rear setback as well. Uh, you have, you know, your stormwater ponds on the site itself, actually, well, a condition, kind of speaking of those in a moment. Um, they have met with GDOT, um, in terms of access to Furious Ferry Road. Uh, they do have a ride-in, ride-out here and they have a full access at the, uh, the turn lane at this location. Uh, in terms of the uses, they're revising the uses, just allow C-one across the board. Uh, that is very similar, actually is exactly the same as what's at Westlake and also the corner property here, which were, the Westlake one was rezoned and I believe is eighty-four, uh, for C-one uses. And they're just now developing it. Um, and again, this kind of keeps it consistent throughout the whole area. In terms of the buffer itself, they have a twenty-foot buffer. We have some, a condition kind of speaking to that to kind of, kind of shore it up a little bit since it's a little, it's a little unclear. Um, again, we could probably work with it. Uh, in terms of the architectural, uh, for the site, they've not provided any elevations. Um, however, there are within a, a CPod corridor protection overlay district. Um, they said they want to do something similar to this. Um, with CPod, there are protections for their architecture. So they already have some standards in place. We have a condition that requires them to come back before, uh, you guys for, um, their architectural side of, side of the design. In terms of the buildings themselves, they're limited to two stories. They can't do a, you know, three-story high bank or something on the site. And, and one, one of the concerns as well, uh, is kind of the dumpster screening on the site. Um, they said that they'll meet county code, but they have provided, this is what they're thinking of doing. Again, this is across the street, um, at the, um, SRD, Spendero Dermatology Development, which is, I think staff kind of holds up as a example of really good development on Furious Ferry Road. Um, they have, you know, the, that's their, their dumpster at the back there, if you can see it. Um, it's very well screened. Um, you can't really tell it's there. It doesn't really attract attention. Uh, they're looking to do something similar to that, um, but we'll address that, you know, at the site plan stage. As future land use, this is, this is within the neighborhood's area. We think we talked about that a little bit tonight. Um, so it, you know, doesn't allow for commercial per se. However, this was already zoned for commercial, you know, back in nineteen-eighty-three. And also this corridor already has a mix of commercial and professional along it. But again, this revision in staff's opinion meets the intent of the future land use map. Again, uh, with staff regulations, approval of conditions, uh, we do have one with a photometric plan showing foot, foot can read as a one-point-oh or less the property line. We're filing a site plan review. Again, this, this is adjacent to a residential neighborhood. There is concern with how light is going to impact, um, those, those, uh, properties. And that leads into the all light on the site will be shielded in directions away from those properties. And also again, like I was talking about before, require review of their building elevations. And also it requires structural buffer will be twenty feet as indicated on the concept plan. And landscape is surely twenty feet as indicated as well. And again, the stormwater ponds, um, there's a code requirement to, um, to screen those. We kind of had added, you know, a little extra protection there, uh, to require that. Um, and also have a, a, uh, condition regarding use of low-impact design by retention is encouraged. Um, that will, we'll be seeing more of that in the future with some of the, uh, stormwater requirements that are coming down, uh, from, uh, federal and state requirements. That includes staff recommendation.
Okay. Gentlemen, do you have any questions to staff? This is a public hearing. Is the applicant here? All right. All right. Please give us your name and home address, please, sir.
Jonathan Crawford, eight-eight-four Willow Lake, Evans, Georgia, three-zero-eight-zero-nine. Um, the applicant apologized. He was unable to be here tonight. He was in Florida. Um, but he, um, asked that I speak on his behalf for any questions that may arise. Um, just a little background, he is a, a resident of the area, currently owns the two shopping centers that bookmark, um, this parcel to the north and to the south. Um, he envisions, um, developing this for kind of a mixed-use retail-professional development. His major concern, as you see with the, the PUD that was approved in nineteen-eighty-three, is a pretty antiquated site plan, as well as uses that were tied to that. Um, the one thing that he would like, the ability, um, should, should it come along with the ability to put like a, um, like a sub-shop, sandwich shop, floors, bakery, something along those lines that, um, retail's changed a lot since nineteen-eighty-three with the advent of e-commerce. But people still eat and that would be a major draw, you know, for this little area.
Have any idea where the dumpster will go?
Yeah, the dumpster.
They're all good earlier and the one reservation I've got is having a dumpster that, that abuts the residential property and you've got food in it.
Right. Um, spoke with our engineer today and he recommended, can I draw on this? I think I can. To the, these little cutout carve-outs right there, um, which would be in line with the Augusta plastic surgery. Um, if you, that was a, um, photo I submitted this, um, afternoon. That's in line with their entrance drive and you, you really don't even see it. We could make sure that we.
I'm not worried about seeing them. I'm worried about smelling them. In the summertime, when you've got food in those things and you've got them in people's backyards, that's what I'm worried about.
Yeah, and I would, um, I'm sure we'd be open to, to hearing any, I would defer, defer to the civil engineer. Yeah, I understand. Right.
I can promote it for you, but I can't tell you what to do with it.
Correct, and I couldn't either. I would defer to the civil engineer and planning and staff to, to, if there were additional recommendations they would like to put in place to, to make sure that would be a, an area of concern.
Well, that's the rub with this concept. I mean, it's a great idea and it, and I, I know the one that they use as example, it's a great-looking. Uh, when they were building it right on the street, I thought, I don't know. Like, it turned out, turned out kind of nice. They don't have a neighborhood right behind them. And, and so I, I wonder if, better to have the building backside. I, I understand why not, but dumpsters, especially if food's involved. If it's just retail, it's not that big. Professional.
I just, I just know my office is behind a Papa John's over on Columbia Road and the dumpster is not good.
Right. And I know it wasn't a guarantee that, you know, food uses would come here. We would, the, he, the applicant at least wanted the option.
Sure, understand.
Should that come.
May not have any, but.
Correct. And then, um, but I guess.
What if? We've got, we've got to assume you're going to do it.
Right. I understand that as well. But with keeping that, I know with some of these uses that are currently approved, I, I also don't think these residents would want to coin laundry. You know, that's not something that's, so, um, so in, in doing that.
I'd rather, I'd rather smell, you know, softener than, 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 than rotten pizza, but.
Well, maybe we can tie a condition with softeners placed around the dumpster pad. But, um, um, I'm not sure if there have been any concerns, I guess, staff with regards to the Augusta plastic surgery and their dumpster. I know that abuts, I know there's a little bit more of a buffer there.
There's definitely more of a buffer. We're talking. I mean, the, the question of the dumpster, if, if you don't want to have it along the back of the property, putting it up here. It's going to be somewhere up there or like in this corner, which you could do. I mean, you could put it right there. Um, you could put it there. You could put one there perhaps.
Yeah, just whenever you design this, I'd like to see you try to, to move it as far away from those houses as you can. And I know we're, if the wind's right and all, we're, we're not going to be able to help. But, but if we can just try at the beginning to get it away from the residents, you know, I'd, I'd appreciate that personally.
Yeah, I think that's a very reasonable request. And, um, I know it's something, I know this site plan was dated, um, October of last year. So it's been something fluid that they've been working with former, um, with, Mr. Strickland while he was here to get to this point. And we thought this was a good, um, redesign, you know, to, to, to bring these properties forward, so.
Gentlemen, any other questions?
Yeah, you, so you're going to set at least one of these buildings up with a, that, super whammy-dine sewer system you've got to put on a, on a restaurant unit? I know there was a shopping center where my store was at for a while. They couldn't have restaurants because they, they didn't have some sort of backflow.
Grease trap.
Grease trap.
Yeah. I really don't envision, I mean, it's all conceptual.
Requests?
Yeah, it's all conceptual at this point. I don't envision being in the commercial real estate space, a, a high-intense, um, facility. Their food facility like that, same way, we didn't come in here asking for, um, a drive-through. We understand that the, the depth of the parcel, um, kind of negates that to even be a request. I think at the most, I think you're probably looking at like a little bakery or a sub-shop. Um, but that would be something to be glad to address. And I'm sure there are some other ways we could shift that, um, to the trash, um, so that would be adequate screening, screening and take care of any turns with the smell, so.
Correct. Unless they set up, you know. The thing you have to do is, uh, and, and if you remember when, when, uh, Mr. Lawrence came in and they were looking to approve the, or make the changes on the site there on Washington Road, he said they were going to put grease traps in front of every bay. Because when they were over in Riverwood, they had people wanting restaurants and they couldn't go back in and retrofit. So they, they prepare ahead of time for that. So if they're not going to put a grease trap in, they're not going to come in here at a parking lot to put one in. They're going to have to decide at the beginning when they build this, if they're going to have that intensive of a restaurant or not. Am, am I correct?
Yeah. So.
Right? Any other questions? All right, thanks, sir.
All right, thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against? Yes, ma'am. We'll go in the back and then we'll come to you. Young lady, please come forward and give us your name and home address.
Barbara Rose and I live at thirty-eight-of-seven Forest Creek Way. Um, the subdivision that is behind this lot of, of land. Uh, I think numerous attempts have been made to commercialize or build something on it. And it was, um, always denied. And I feel like, uh, a doctor's office might be suitable because there's a lot of doctor offices a- across the street now. But we don't need no fast, fast food chains or restaurants. Because, um, Bylow and up i- is up there and it's closed and it has a strip mall. And there's numerous shops that are vacant that could be utilized, uh, for that purpose. And again, I've lived over thirty years in, in Forest Creek. And I feel like it should be preserved, a little bit of land. People to enjoy, not over-commercialize everything in our neighborhood. All I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Please give us your name and home address.
My name is Cheryl Myers. I live at five-six-one Forest Crossing, which is right here. Um, I do have a couple of concerns. I don't know everything about the construction business. But I do know across the back here, there's an easement by the county. We have concrete tops that house our sewer. Our sewer system doesn't go to the front. Our sewer system goes to the back. So you're talking about only twenty feet off the line. You're going to have to come a lot more than twenty feet off the line to maintain that county easement and provide a buffer to our neighborhood, which I don't, I'm, I know what I'm talking about because it's right behind my fence. And.
Can you address the easement question?
Hold on one second, I can. There's these huge concrete, you know, I'm talking about, I was surprised when I bought the home.
Stormwater?
My sewers were into the back. And I said, are you kidding me? I mean, it, you really, I've never seen that before. You're going to have to come more than twenty feet off.
And when they get in, into the final design with the county, they will not let them.
Right. Well, I wanted to hit that off first.
Okay, sure, they will.
Being there, I already deal with the noise from Furious Ferry, but I've, I've learned to live with that. But I don't like a two-story building being where they can look directly into my home. Um, and the dumpsters, I'm so glad that you brought that out because that is detrimental. You're going to have a plastic surgery maybe there. Do you know what body parts they're going to be disposing of? That's an infectious disease. I know what I'm talking about. I've been a nurse for almost thirty years. So all these questions, I do think we need answers. I think it's not anywhere near ready to go to. And I'm very concerned. And one other thing, two retention ponds, why? Those are mosquito havens. We have children that play in these backyards.
So, so there is a, it's a ten-foot drainage utility easement back there. Twenty feet total, it's ten feet in horse water. No.
Not sewer?
So that, hold on one second, verify.
I have to pull off about forty feet.
No, you won't. It's a sewer line. You're going to be ten feet off of that.
Okay, so it's actual sewer, not?
It's sewer.
Not storm sewer?
Yeah, you'll be ten feet off of it for a structure. So they're going, their fence is going to probably be higher up at the parking lot. And they can plant, they can plant shrubs in the. You're going to have ten feet of trees in between. It'll, it'll still be planted.
Only twenty feet off. So I go out in my backyard and they're going to be right in my face. And the county's going to have enough to come in there with this, the big, the concrete sections that are back there now. I don't see it happening. So, I go out in my backyard, and they're gonna be right in my face, and the county's gonna have enough to come in there with this, the big, the concrete sections that are back there now, I don't see it happening. I don't.
All right.
Um, but I do worry about the retention ponds, they are mosquito havens, they are.
Retention or detention?
That's unknown at this point, I mean, again-
It was up in the air, we don't know.
Cause most of these don't hold water all the time, they, they slow the water down and, and allow it to go out, some do, but, but it depends on the design.
I've seen the problems before, we've had children-
We've been hypothetical too, because at this point, we don't know exactly what they're gonna do.
Right.
And all the engineering and everything else are coming to play before the final analysis.
Okay.
I understand your concerns, but-
I do have a lot of concerns.
There's just so much, that's the question mark today.
We just need everything kind of defined, because this is our homes, you've been there a lot longer than I have, but I still see families that could not make it tonight because of small children, that asked me to ask these questions, we are right across there, and I know we're gonna have buildings, but we need to look at what this is, this is, you know, dumpsters and parking right up against it, but then I know the easement's back there, I don't want anything happening to my sewer, messing up my house, it's, there's a lot of if ands and buts here.
Thank you, ma'am.
When will we get another meeting to see all the fina- finales of this?
Got no idea what the pace of development is.
Okay, but you would post it again, so we would know, thank you so much for your time.
It, it won't be posted, it, it goes to the board commissioners after this.
So how will I know? I mean-
It's gonna go to the, if it's approved tonight, it goes to the fifteenth, October fifteenth, meeting of the board commissioners.
Okay, then-
If you wanna get, if, if it gets approved, and you wanna get site plans, then ask for them.
Then, there would be no, no other objections made, you just tell them our concerns.
So they would get the, what happens at this meeting, they would get the minutes of the meeting, they would get all the staff recommendations and all that, and you can definitely show it at board commissioners.
On the fifteenth, same place?
Yeah, and you would ask, ask her for-
For, for a, for a-
I know you, she was so helpful for me, I appreciate it, very nice lady, asset to you, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, with that, I'm gonna close, yes, sir, Dr. Allgood, since you're kind of the pseudo-applicant here.
Uh, my name is Andy Allgood, uh, live in two five five Riverbend Drive, Clarksville, South Carolina. Uh, I understand your concerns completely, you know, the, uh, and I've, I talked with Mr. Butler about this, I said, well, well, why don't we just do, if we're gonna do this, let's just go in and get a variance whenever we want to change something. And, and Will said that it felt like it would be better if we go along these lines with this zoning and change the way that this is, you know, in the original plans, I understand you thinking about looking at the building, uh, in the original plans, which were approved and are still in place, the back of the building is almost right up against y'all's property line. And so that's still in place, you know, that zoning is on this property. I think this, as far as the usage of the property and the protection of the neighborhoods, uh, I feel like this plan is so much better, and I understand the dumpster concerns, uh, Mr. Cox, I talked with him about that today, and I think that is something that can be worked out. This is not a final design, but it's a preliminary, it basically was a preliminary design, show that the property actually could be developed because of the size. I understand your concerns about the ponds, uh, these ain't cory ponds, uh, the, uh, they are even different things now, when we were looking at this, there are different ways to where you don't have to have that much as far as the, as far as the detention or ponds and the location. It is a long site, and there's a lot of, a lot of water coming down the hill, just like Mr. Lawrence earns about during the construction, about water coming down to his office, and those are something that would be developed with the, and taken care of with the engineering department along those lines, so. And I understand, I, I really do, it's just, this plan, the way that this is, actually is a lot friendlier to the neighborhood. Uh, it's not, the buildings are not against the property design, they're moved forward, and the design of this, of course, is ministry, fantastic in helping with architectural design. So it's, the building has to look good from Furious Fairy Road, and it's gotta look good from the back, you know, what, what would be the front. Uh, it's not something that can be just, it can't look like the regular back of a, of a strip shopping center.
All right, sir.
So, that's all I have to say about that, and I, obviously I'm in favor of this.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it, and with that, I'm gonna close the public hearing and accept the motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Chairman, I make the motion, VA nineteen one oh oh one, or approval?
That'd be RZ one nine oh three.
I'm looking at the wrong number.
Yes, sir.
Oh, well, two?
Going to, to, uh, file RZ one nine one zero zero three, trying to jump ahead on us.
Jump one, rephrase it, RZ one nine one zero zero three, I make a motion for-
Go here a second.
Second.
What's the-
Were there, were there conditions on there?
With conditions.
Would you like to include the conditions?
With conditions.
Seconds to hold?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
No, I'll just, before the discussion, you know, the, remember the parking lot? Structural buffer, but, uh, there wasn't, I was just re- rereading this, uh, about, uh, it says front landscape, but it doesn't mention anything in the back.
So, the condition states with the, uh, structural buffer, should be twenty feet as indicated on the constable, meet the requirement, section is one thirty-nine, that includes-
That includes vegetation? Okay, thank you. So, any other discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. Butler, file VA one nine one zero zero one.
Chairman, chair's request for variances, section is nine S ninety-eight, lists lot structure requirements, and is one thirty-nine, buffers and screening, just building setbacks and buffers at one eight seven Bastion Road, currently zone C three heavy commercial. Property is located at the intersection of Martinis Boulevard and Bastion Road on the north side of that intersection. And again, property is currently zone C three, property to the north is split zone C two and C three, property to the west is zone C three as well, property to, um, east is zone C two, property across Martinis Boulevard, you do have the CSX right away, and a little strip of C two there as well. Here's an aerial view of the site, again, this is, uh, Butler Automotive, uh, no relation whatsoever, um, again, shows the site itself. Play a joke, I like it, um, they are looking, uh, this shows existing site, and currently in use for a auto repair business. There's a plot of the property, and the, and the site plan, uh, for the overall site, so the applicant is looking to have this small addition made on the side, on the side of the building here. Uh, you do see the front setback on Martinis Boulevard, surprising as, as a collector, so it does have a ninety-foot setback, so you can see the setback goes right through the middle of the building. You have the one twenty-five on Bastion Road, see, it's, it doesn't touch there, um, one thing from, with the, with the property, um, this building was built before both these roads were upgraded. Um, when, when it was built at the time, Martinis Boulevard was a, it's a local street, it's at a fifty-five foot setback from the center line, Bastion Road was a collector at that point. Um, so again, it meant the setbacks at the time, uh, again, what they're looking to do is have this small addition here, um, this doesn't trigger the entire site, uh, needing to have a, you know, variance for all kinds of things, um, however, they, they did ask for revision, or for a variance to the buffer at the back of the property here, just to kind of go ahead and get that kind of out of the way, um, if they were to do a, you know, a, an expansion that was more than twenty-five percent of the existing building, they had to address all those concerns, they went ahead and took care of it all at one time, so they don't have to come back and get it in the future. Uh, so the request here, um, the, the, the front setback is reduced, six five feet to the center line, Martinis Boulevard. One thing with this, um, they didn't mention in the application, um, but against one of those, they have an existing shed here, um, it's within the, it's actually within the three-foot setback, uh, that would normally be permitted between similar, uh, some of those own properties, staff has recommended a condition that reduces the setback down to three feet against this property here, um, even though it is zone C two, it would have, typically have a thirty-foot setback from it, however, there's existing shed there, there's also another one here, and the, the reduction there really doesn't cause any harm for anyone, um, the existing shed, though, um, does have a condition, and it can't be replaced at current location. And also, going back and forth, the shed here, um, is, is within the front setback, however, it is small enough that it doesn't have to meet that large of a setback, it's still a five-foot setback, it's under four hundred square feet, um, but however, there is a, a comment that, you know, if that does increase in size, it has to meet the setbacks. So lastly, the buffer requirements are removed for the structural buffer only, um, other screening requirements, so just for the dumpster enclosure, uh, remain in place, that includes staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, sir, would you like to come forward and give us any additional information you'd like us to have?
Sure. My name is Suvas Patel, my address is six eight seven Rebecca Eyes Drive.
Would you spell your first name?
S U V as in Victor, A S.
Okay, thank you.
And the address is six eight seven Rebecca Eyes Drive Northwest, Lilburn, Georgia, three zero zero four seven. I'm the representative of the owner, we are the hired architects, and the owner's rep is here. And th- this lot is a corner lot, and it has significant setbacks on two of its sides, and it is also triangular lot, so those unique conditions make the buildable area of this lot very, very minimal. In addition to that, we have a communications tower, which is a com- community amenity in the back, and that tower also has a access easement where we cannot build upon, which takes away room from the back, so we are left with very little building, uh, area, and the imposition of all the ordinances, zoning ordinances would, would, would cause undue hardship on the owner, and that's why we are requesting, uh, this variance. Uh, the intent of the owner is to just organically grow and expand the existing automotive, uh, service shop, and make it look new and updated, like the car dealerships that are across the road, so it is going to be a nice project, and uh, it'll improve the aesthetics of the community, it'll also improve, uh, road safety, once everything is fenced in and all of that. Uh, once, all, all those salient points are mentioned in the brief and reiterated, uh, by the planning staff, I would like to add that on the criteria for evaluating this variance, on point number three, uh, topographical or other conditions peculiar in particular the site, uh, are such that strict adherence to the requirements of this chapter would cause the owner, owner unnecessary hardship, and would not carry out the intent of this chapter. Some of the focus on would not carry out the intent of the, of this chapter, if we were to impose a thirty-foot structural buffer, then that would make us push the driving into the property more south, towards the intersection of Martinis Boulevard and Bastion Road, which would be a dangerous situation, it also so- slow traffic down by making the drive-through, I mean, the drive percut narrower, so it actually enhances, uh, public safety, traffic safety, to grant this variance on the structural buffer requirement.
All right, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing, is there anyone else that'd like to speak for or against this particular variance? Yes, sir.
I'm Patrick Duckworth with Duckworth Development, um, live at eight fifteen Old Stevens Creek Road, um, just want to say that this, uh, what, um, Butler Automotive is trying to accomplish is what we did at their Evans location. We significantly improved that location and its visibility and the, uh, aesthetics of it, and so that's, that's part of this, is about to give it a facelift.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve file VA one nine one zero zero one with conditions.
Go here a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Approve carries five zero. All right, last of the public hearings tonight, uh, Mr. Butler, file VA one nine one zero zero two.
Request for a variance, section nine S ninety-eight, list lot social requirements, two ten Meridian Drive, Chick-fil-A, currently zone C two. Location of the property over in the gateway area outside of Grove Town. Again, it shows the location of the property with all the zoning around it, again, everything around it is C two, except for, you know, the RA over here. And aerial view of the site, again, current Chick-fil-A development. All right, uh, wh- 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 what we will be looking at tonight, um, is the covers for the, uh, the drive-through, I'm here for, for their staff to stand under, uh, when it's very hot outside. Again, it shows the existing site, they, they did get a variance, uh, for a, uh, for landscaping, I believe twenty sixteen, uh, they've done a quite a good job with their landscaping project. It shows the site plan, here's the areas in red that we'll be discussing this evening. It shows the canopies they're looking to have on the front of the property, again, the reduction in the setback would be to allow these canopies, uh, these canopies here are considered structures, uh, so they do have to meet setbacks, um, however, they're relatively minor, uh, there is, um, on the side of the building, I'm on the Meridian Drive side, there are some canopies that will be going in place, those could have been done as a minor waiver, or we just went and followed them all together, I'd include them all as one application. There's the, the existing drive-through, again, you can see someone actually standing there, um, where, where there would be the, uh, cover in the future, that's to take your order, and again, the existing drive-through, there's already a, a, a small overhang there, this will just kind of increase it a little bit. And again, applicant, our, we recommend approval of the request, I drew this, the front setbacks a hundred feet from the center line, center line of horizon, South Parkway, and twenty-five feet from the right away of Gateway.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, sir, would you like to give us any additional information?
Smith, two two zero nine, Father Gill Drive, Evans. Most of the information pretty much sums it up, it's a safety play for my team, but there's a great example. Uh, my team members spend hours a day roughly outside serving our guests, so there's, during those times.
Great. This is a public hearing, is there anyone here, anyone here at all that would like to speak either for or against this particular motion? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion to approve VA one nine and two. Second. With conditions, sorry.
No condition?
Seconds still on?
There, there are no-
No conditions, I'm sorry.
There is no conditions.
You got it right, I'm sorry, I'm just watching Al over here shuffle around, I know his knee's hurting.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just watching, team saying you're trying to trap him.
All right, so, motion to approve has been made, uh, all in favor? All opposed, all right, motion carries five zero. We've got two text amendments to initiate tonight, uh, gentlemen, we just need a motion, uh, can we take them both at the same time, or do we have to do them individually?
Oh, you can do it however you'd like to do it, do you want any commentary on them, or?
No, I think we've been through that. Unless Mr. Lawrence would like to hear about these exciting text amendments to reduce the caliper of trees from three inches to two point five inches, because they're easier to find? All right, that being said, gentlemen, we need a motion to initiate the text amendment. To achieve it by saying so moved.
So moved.
Go here a second.
Second.
All in favor? Motion approved, five zero. Any public comments, or commissioner comments, or anything else, staff comments, anything from anybody? Motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Go here a second.
Second.
All in favor? Motion to adjourn carries four one.
Four one.
Meeting adjourned at eight thirty-one, next meeting October seventeenth at six PM each hour.